Great, Mr. Chairman, you have three members present while he is not on the call. At least I do not see him.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, hold on, let me see if I can. Okay, so we, at least we have three members, so I will. December 1st, Planning Board Meeting, time order at 7:05. All favor?
Aye. Brad?
Yeah. Me. And.
Jim?
Jim isn't, is Jim back? Jim?
He's reconnecting to audio.
Okay. I see. I see you, Brad. You're Old Town One now, right?
That's me.
Okay.
I don't know why I went like that, but whatever.
Uh, Jim connected it? Yeah?
No, I think he's Galaxy seven.
Yeah, he is Galaxy seventeen, J seven, but.
That's correct.
Yeah. What's going on here?
It looks like he just got kicked off.
Yep.
So Rebecca, do you have to do that open meeting thing, or did I miss that?
Uh, we do, if the chairman would like, I can, I can go through the format.
Wanted to do that, Bob?
Sure, that's, that's fine. I mean, we didn't, we had votes on the opening time, but that's fine. That's all right, Rebecca.
Okay.
So I'll turn town planner and the update on remote meetings.
This open meeting of the Groveland Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak, outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Groveland Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference.
All right, thank you, Rebecca. The only problem is, uh, we don't have enough to vote on decision, the possible vote for eighty-nine Salem Street. Uh, Robert Baldinelli and Steve Daniels, so.
So I just got a text message from Jim. He's trying to connect um, on his phone. And then I actually just got an email from Walter, who has stated that he got called out on a job, so I'm not going to be able to make the meeting at seven. My recommendation is to vote is to, in my. Sorry, I'm having trouble reading what he wrote.
Take your time.
Um, essentially, he's just saying that he got called out on a job, so he's not going to be able to make the meeting at seven. So let me, if I may, reach out to Jim again and see if he's gonna keep trying.
Yes, absolutely.
So this is fun.
I know, huh? Our first meeting in what, a month and a half, we can't get together? Come on.
We forget.
So Bob, they almost got all the steel up for the school? Yeah, they're moving on right along pretty good there, Brad. I would say probably good two-thirds of it right now.
Wow, just flying.
All the, all the foundation guys are out, they, they've pulled out. Steel, uh, the brick, the brickies are in there right now. Uh, electrician and they're doing all the underground uh, work underneath, in, in the building now for sewer drains and electric and all that, so. Yeah, they're still going right on.
Wow.
I just got a text from Rebecca, Jim literally is still trying to reconnect to us, so. We'll give it a few more minutes and I don't know what to do, probably have to reschedule.
Can he get off from his iPhone, or is it?
So I'm hoping that if he's having problems with the internet, maybe he could actually call my personal cellphone, and then I can have him listen in on my cellphone and unmute my mic for him to be able to communicate. Um, so he's still, and, and just voice himself as he would, although his, his camera wasn't on or something similar to that nature. I'm just trying to confirm that with him.
Okay. You still busy, Brad?
Yeah, I was slammed.
Yeah, that's good, though.
Yeah, it's too busy. I like, thank God it's been warm.
Yeah. You know, I don't know what's gonna happen now with all this new rising cases, you know, they could shut down again.
I'm staggering everyone from coming in.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
That way, I figure every half hour, every hour, somebody comes in, takes a bunch of, you know, I mean, there's slips.
Sure.
We, uh, we don't all meet at once, and
Yeah.
the risk is low to, to, you know, catch any, if we're gonna get it.
Definitely.
Mr. Chairman, I have Jim on the phone, so he's gonna communicate via that way. Jim, do you want to let the chairman know that you're here, please?
This is Chairman Jim Bogjardis sitting here via the phone. I'll be listening in and giving my comments as needed.
Okay, Jim, thank you. Uh, we already voted to open a meeting. Uh, town. Uh, the town planner has read the update on remote uh, meetings, so I'm just giving you, getting you up to speed, Jim. So the next item on the agenda is eight ninety-five Salem Street. Robert Baldinelli and Steve Daniels, the vote to endorse an approved plan. Do I have a motion to endorse a plan?
So motion.
Okay, so, Mr. Speaker, what's your opinion on this plan that, uh, uh, endorse on it?
Uh, it's definitely great job. It's the one with the electrician and the plumber is putting a commercial building out, so um, uh, definitely, I would, there was a motion, and I would second the motion.
I got one question.
Yeah.
On that site, and the whole, is that whole hill coming down for that line of site that I mentioned way back when? So when you're looking out, when they're coming out of the street, and you're looking left, the site is a curve. So as long as, you know, as long as, I don't know if they're taking.
Yeah, I think, I think Peter spoke on that, and yes, they would, they were doing something. So they have their, the, the site down the street, so they could see it coming out.
All right.
I would confirm with the chairman that I was out at the site, and that as part of the approved plan, they are looking to take down the trees and remove a portion of that hill to enhance the visibility from where the proposed drive is.
So.
Okay, because we, I think we do.
Prevent any blind, uh, blind driveway?
Yeah, there won't, there won't be any blind driveway at all, no.
Because that's also a concern, and would be the safety of the general public.
Yep.
So yeah, as long as the line of sight, that, that was my whole, that was my whole question in the whole beginning. As long as the line of sight's okay, then I'm all right with it.
Okay, I, I'm gonna second the motion, Jim.
As long as you feel that they've met the adequate demands of power, and they're, again, this is just preliminary, so there's things we may correct?
No, this is the, we have voted on the, we had voted on the fight, we have already voted to approve the plan. This is just a vote to endorse the site plan, so that they can record it at the registry of deed.
Registry.
Well, if my fellow colleagues feel that, um, they've got the requirements to go ahead with this, then I will also agree and endorse it.
Okay. So everybody said aye, so it's uh, Jim, Brad, and Bob.
Aye.
Aye. And Brad already said aye.
Aye, Brad.
So, so motion granted. Okay, um, the next one is Zero Center Street, review of conceptual plan.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, this is at the request of the board at our meeting on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Uh, the potential developer had contacted the board about potentially moving forward with a conservation subdivision design. And at that meeting, he had mentioned that there may not be an opportunity to connect to sewer, um, and therefore was curious as to whether or not the board would waive such a requirement. And so the board said that it wasn't typical, but it was hard to weigh in on that issue without actually seeing a plan or a proposal. So the potential developer had to come forward with a potential conceptual plan to see and show the board what they were thinking.
Right. And you sent us a couple of drawings.
That is correct, and I'll pull them up on the screen right now.
Yeah, have you seen them, Brad?
I've seen the drawings. I just, I have a question.
Yeah.
The owners. One of the questions I'd ask in fairness, you know, what do they believe, how do they believe they're gonna meet the criteria of the CSD?
Right. And is one of the owners there to answer that?
Uh, this is, this is Paul Marshand. I'm just, I'm an engineer working with, um, you know, the owner and the broker, actually. Really, the question that we were trying to get answered back in August was a little bit more basic than what we're talking about right now. Under, under the conservation subdivision design standards, there's conflicting language. Uh, some sections refer to being on septic system, other sections say you have to be on sewer and town water. So the whole purpose of this exercise, uh, back in August, you guys asked to have a concept plan, you know, in front of you, so you have an idea of what they're trying to do, so that's the plan you have on the screen right now. But really, the, the question for tonight that I'm trying to get answered is, um, can it be on septic? Or does it have to be on sewer? If it has to be on sewer, then it's all over, and then there's, there's no sewer available, so that's the end of it.
Right, there's no sewer avail, available, but you're looking at the bylaws, it says you shall basically, it's a betterment to the town, so again, you know, on the CSD bylaw, how do you, how does this betterment to the town?
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't prepared to go to that level. What I'm looking right now was in section on page seventy-four of the bylaw, it talks about percolation tests and squished water systems, all that kind of stuff. And then further on, it talks about being on sewer. So I'm just trying to find out, before we even start going down that road and seeing how it's an improvement for the town, a betterment for the town, there's no sense even going down there if it has to be on sewer, because it has to be on sewer, it can't be on sewer, there's no sewer available. So I'm just, I'm really asking you guys just to.
I'm gonna just, just cut to the chase. You're saying that there's no sewer available, and I believe you. How we, how do we come to that determination, there is no sewer available, so we could just take that equation, but out of the equation?
I'm sorry, I asked that question again?
So what I'm asking you is, how did you come to that conclusion that there was no sewer available?
There's no sewer available, but.
Jim, there is definitely no sewer available there.
I don't know if this town water.
The pipes aren't available, or is the street that they're running off to put them on isn't available?
It.
Not that section of town.
Yeah, not, not that section of town. There's no sewer out that section of town. And uh, I don't even know if there's uh, water.
I don't, I built around the corner at Center Street, we had to put a well in, there's no water, there's gas.
Yeah, but there's no water, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, but if you look.
What that would mean, if there's no water, that means we have to, you have to conform to nitrogen incentive standards of ten thousand gallons, or ten thousand square feet of area per betterment, every get, regardless of zoning, so I'm aware of that. The question is, I look at your zoning, and one section says I can be on septic, another section says I could be on sewer in the same, in the same zoning. So I need someone to tell me. It can't be septic.
I think that what happened is that the last meeting, a lot of things was that the language, like you said, conflicts with each other. It looks as though at one point in time, there was an allowance for septic to be included as part of a CSD. However, when they did some changes to that particular special permit and the bylaw, it removed it. But however, when they did it, they didn't do it conclusively, so they left a portion of that in there and then intended to make it shall. And so then it becomes whether or not the board believes that they can, in fact, waive a requirement that does use the word shall. And that was something that we discussed at the last meeting. And the board specifically stated that no PUD or no CSD has ever been approved without the connection to sewer. But one of the board members at that particular point in time stated that that does not mean they don't have the ability to waive it. So there was no conclusion as to what that was, because he was, in fact, concerned with how this development would suit the town. So I think the reason for asking for a conceptual plan to take it even one step further was to get an idea of what the developer was trying to do. And if it was a betterment, maybe consider going down the road of a waiver. Whereas that had not been solidified, this was the opportunity for the developer to come forward and discuss why they figured that they should be allowed to move forward without the connection to sewer.
So that would be my basis on the opening question is, how is it a betterment to the, how is it a betterment to the town? You know, that we can actually waive parts of the CSD, so you, you know?
Well, again, I wasn't prepared to go there, but let me just talk about that real quickly. Obviously, this would be a, a private way, it would not be a town road, wouldn't be owned, wouldn't be maintained by the town, town would imply it, plow it, would have to repair it. Also, with these, with these units here, um, probably not have very little or no school age children, so right off the bat, there's a betterment for the town, but really, the, the basic question is, does the planning board have the authority or the ability, if, if they so choose, to allow a CSD on septic? And if you're telling me no, then I, you know, move on to the next one. Um, if you're saying yes, then, you know, then, then, then it's worthwhile going further with this. But right now, I just, when I read this thing, I, I read section K on page seventy-four, talks about percolation tests and wastewater systems, and goes on and on and on. And I go a few more pages in, page seventy-seven, it says lots modified on the section must, must be connected to municipal sewer and water. So you know, i- if you, if you're telling me that bylaws need to be corrected to get rid of the septic, then fine, that's, if that's what you're saying, I just, I just know what we're, what we're doing here.
So, Mr. Chair, how do you feel about, you know, if the better, in that language being shall, you know, kind of speaks for itself?
Yeah, it does.
Uh, I mean, so, I mean, are you, are we willing to waive? As long as, you know, I'm willing to entertain as long as I know it's gonna better the town. You know, if it's gonna better the developer, it's not what that CSD was, uh, the language is for.
No, it isn't, and I, right now, looking at the plan, I don't see it better than the town, at the way it is right now. I mean.
Mr. Chairman, can I play those over here for a second? And I want to ask the question, if you, if there is no sewerage, and which means there is no pipes of anything to bring water, how are they supposed to get hydrants and the necessity that, uh, pass out to, to satisfy the need of the fire department in order to have this built?
You dig a fire pond.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, again, I'm, I'm new to the town, so I don't know the ins and outs, but my mind is thinking, well, you can't get water, then how do you get a hydrant?
Well, if you look at the town of Bloxwood, I don't think there's a hydrant in the town, so it'll be a fire pond.
Okay, that, that answers my question, then, thank you.
Sure.
But other than. Yeah, I.
It's a big wetland crossing, too.
It, it's a huge wetland crossing.
And a twenty-foot road.
Yep. But, well, with that many units, it should be twenty-four, I would think. Um, let's see, pause it, one, two.
It's twelve units, it looks like, right?
Yeah, twelve units, yep. Six duplexes.
Yeah.
And I don't have the plan in front of me, doesn't the road go around the way? Put, put the plan back up, Rebecca?
There's fourteen, there's fourteen units.
I mean fourteen, you're right.
Yes, fourteen units.
My, my, my mistake.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, this is, it's actually, it's not a very big wetland crossing, it's just across in a very small area, but there is a wetland crossing, but mostly.
Well, yeah, you're right on the wetlands borders, you, you're, you're working in the buffer zone.
Correct. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, you know, was, you know, is there any open space? Is there any? Is there any, you know, is there any open space for the town? Is there any trail for the town? I, you know, there's a trail back there, but you can connect it to, you know, there's multiple ways to connect to that trail.
Now, the plan is, is to have open space in the back part of the property, so that's correct.
But if it's in the back pot, in the back pot of the property, but if it's a private drive, you're gonna have to deed something to the town to let people get back to the back part of the property they use?
That's correct. That's not, that's not, that's unusual.
Okay.
What happens, I know it's a private road, but what happens, who's, you know, when they maintain it, they're not gonna be putting a town truck, a size of a town truck in there to plow it, are they? And then you're gonna have to, you've got, you've got a twenty-foot road that's probably gonna lose two feet at least on each side on heavy snow.
The road, the road will be made, you know, the twenty feet was just a proposal, it doesn't have to be twenty feet, the road could be twenty-four feet, whatever it needs to be. So I don't think we should get too focused on the minutia right now. Um, there would be a home association that would pay, you know, pay in fees, and that would cover the cost of snow removal and repairs and maintenance, which is typical.
So, you know, if you, if you.
It wasn't intended to be a, a proposed plan in terms of, you know, an approval or anything. We're just trying to find out if he has the ability to put a C, a CSD subdivision or, you know, development on septic.
So Paul, so again, it's, how do, you know, how does it, how does it think, how do we think it's gonna fall under the CSD category? And how does it better the town, knowing that, you know, knowing that we can't connect to sewerage?
Well, we've already, I've already kind of talked about that, but that's, that's the whole point.
But we're going one ahead, I mean, what would your proposal be for?
Maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not saying it right, maybe I'm not presenting it properly. But what I was hoping to find out is the planning board said, well, yeah, yeah, okay, we, we see where it says septic care, it says sewer there, so if it was a good plan, yeah, we, we would, we would, we would approve it on septic. Then give me enough to go back to the owner and say, okay, it's worthwhile going further with this to see if we can make a plan that the planning board finds acceptable in terms of their other requirements. But if the requirement is, look, it has to be on sewer, whether it's a good plan or a bad plan, then I need to know that now, so it might claim to suspend thousands of dollars just to find out it needs to be on sewer.
So us.
Regulations aren't clear, that they're, they're, they're conflicting.
They, they're kind of clear from where I'm sitting, but
Okay, well.
Where, where it betters the town also gives you the flexibility of lessening the lot to twenty thousand square feet, thus making you able to put fourteen units in. So if this wasn't, if this isn't gonna meet the CSD criteria, I don't think you could probably get, what, two houses in there on a standard subdivision? Or a standard A and, it's not an A and R.
No, it would be an A and R, it had to be a.
Would have to be, what would it be, a definitive subdivision plan?
Yeah.
It showed six lots. Could be six, six, six lots. And that could be, you know, singles or duplexes, depending on the size and the frontages.
I mean, if that's not gonna fly, if you're not gonna, if we can't meet the CSD criteria, could you bring in a, you know, a preliminary for a division, subdivision plan? Or is this something that they don't want to entertain, because the number of dwellings isn't gonna be enough to make it worth it for them?
Well, I just think, I just think that a conventional plan is gonna be, um, it's gonna be a lot of road in order to get, you know, to get the finances you need for the lot. So that's why we're looking through the CSD, to, to get a better plan for everyone involved. But again, I'm just looking at the septic versus sewer thing, and we just keep on getting off that subject.
Well, I know, because.
Difficult, but I'm just not getting the answer from you folks. I, I think I'm sort of getting it, but I'm not really getting it, so I mean, it's kind of like, I can tell my client.
Well, personally.
And the way it looks.
Way it looks.
I, I think the, the road length is gonna be an issue as well, you know, it looks like it's gonna be over seven hundred and fifty feet. So, you know, I'm gonna refer back to the chair, he can make the, the final.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, I really, um, don't see this gonna be a betterment for the town right now. And what we have to do as a, as planning board is go back to the bylaw and change it, so the wording is a lot more understanding. So.
We can certainly do that, Mr. Chairman, as well, as we discussed at the last meeting, some of the language could entail, um, you know, specifying that if there is no sewer within a thousand feet of the development, then they were able to use septic, like we do for our subdivision, uh, regulations in general. Uh, or if the board does not want to see a CSD utilized as such, then it would eliminate that particular language that Paul referenced, and it would just say that the, unless you connect to sewer, you don't get the benefits of a CSD. So this conversation, too, is kind of to try and to figure out what the board would like to do in terms of moving forward and correcting that language, and we can address that at the next town meeting as well, if the board would like to do so.
Yeah, no, I understand exactly.
Cross me to put sewer in there if, if it was, if it was possible.
Jim, it's not even po, it's, it's not even possible.
Okay, so there is no, nothing to tap into, exactly, okay?
Not unless the West Newbury had sewerage, and they don't have anything.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna just have to eliminate that altogether. If there's no feasible way to have sewerage or piping put inside, that answers that question. We already know without sewerage, there's no benefit to the town. So now we've crossed that bridge, and we understand those two issues. So like I said, like I think I believe Rebecca was. So like I said, like I think I believe Rebecca was saying. It's the right way is to, now let's define the language. And I liked what he was saying as far as it's either black or white. Either it's a thousand feet within and then we allow it, or. If there is no sewage, just a no go, because if there's no sewage, there's no benefit to the town. And unfortunately, that's the way it is.
So.
Yeah.
Uh, through, Mr. Chair, I think, in my eyes, I see no, no reason to let a C S D go on this.
And same as, like I just said, same here, I think, pretty sure, plus, like you said. Looking at the road and everything else, gonna be over the seven hundred feet length. And everything also, and I mean, he's gonna need a ton of waivers to, to do this. So, um. I, you know, I hate to see him spend a ton of money and. Come back to us and, and we're gonna say no to him, you know, so.
So it looks like it's gonna be off the board.
You can come in with a definitive subdivision plan and, and make it work some other way.
Yes, he could.
Roads have to be a little bit, you know, bigger and.
Yep, a little more creative, but yeah, you could do that also.
Okay, I think, hey, I think I'm all set, guys, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, Paul.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. Oh, okay, so thirty one Du- Duennell Street as um withdrawn their. Uh. Thing tonight, so uh. We'll go to the. Meeting minutes, approved from October sixth, twenty twenty. Do I have it?
Motion, so motion.
There you go.
We forget how to do this.
Yes, I know, huh? All in favor? Aye?
Aye, Brad.
Aye.
Okay. And then, um. A motion, and well, before we even do that. Uh, Rebecca, you said. We, uh, we, you have nothing coming in yet for the agenda, right?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have anything that's upcoming on the agenda that we would need to see this month, so I was thinking potentially that we may reconvene in January. Um, either the first or third Tuesday of the month, depending on if any applications or business arises.
Okay, so I, uh, everybody. Okay with that?
Okay with that.
Yep, so, um.
Merry Christmas to you all, be safe.
Yeah, well. So we have a motion adjourned at um seven thirty seven.
So motion.
Aye. So, alright guys.
Lady.
Be safe and uh.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy, happy holidays, and if you need anything, let us know.
Oh, yes, I, I will need you all to stop in to uh actually sign the eight ninety five Salem Street I'm in tomorrow, if you're able to stop by or next Wednesday. Or I can uh arrange another time to meet you that uh suits your schedule.
Well, I thought that was, I thought, wait, Bob, I thought that was Rebecca had presents for us.
Yeah, me too, you know, but. Uh, yeah, that's fine, can you just send me a reminder tomorrow, Rebecca, so I can? I can, I can get there tomorrow.
Same here, Rebecca, let me know when you're in.
Sounds good, thank you.
Alright.
Okay, guys. See you later.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.